If we could all rise and do pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
So today is the first meeting of our newly elected Board of Selectmen. This meeting, we reorganized the board. To start, I'll ask for nomination for Board Chair.
I'll nominate Bob Richards as Chair.
I'll second that.
Any other nominations? All right, all in favor of voting Bob Richards as Chair, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, Mr. Richards, congratulations.
Maybe. Thank you, guys. Next one is to set the day and time for the meeting.
You need a clerk.
Oh, it doesn't say that.
It doesn't, sorry, I dropped it.
We do need a clerk.
I make a motion and we nominate Glenn Travis.
What's that, can I? Yeah, second.
You're the Chair, okay. Okay, all.
All board, I get to vote.
Okay. All in favor of electing Glenn Travis as clerk?
Aye.
Okay, congratulations, Glenn Travis.
Okay, what I said before. Set the time and day, day and time for meetings. They are presently at seven o'clock on Tuesdays.
Make a motion to set the meeting time on Tuesdays, or every third Tuesday? Or generally Tuesdays?
Every other.
Every other Tuesday at seven.
There a second?
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Adopt the board rules, which are in your packet.
And make a motion to accept the Town Hall Hidden Select Board Rules of Procedure, as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
Everybody had a chance to look them over? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. Destinate a paper of record.
I'll make a motion to have our paper of record be the Free Press. Lakes Region Free Press newspaper as the paper of record.
There a second? Rich Green, I'll second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
You've got anything else you need that?
Amendments, no, but there is one amendment.
There's more than one.
Oh, there's more than one, okay.
Go ahead, if you've got an amendment.
The amendment I have was under new business, the appointment of the health officer.
That's the same one I got. Okay. Anything else? Make an entertaining motion for that.
Make a motion to add appointment of health officer under new business G.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Be good. Okay. Mr. Ed Clark is here to talk about Town Hall stuff.
All right, so Ed Clark's here, he's here to talk about the ongoing project here in Town Hall. We did, I mean, I'm just gonna come right out and say it. We did have a minor error upstairs on the second floor. As our previous engineer retired and Ed came on board, the plans had changed a little bit. And what was previously going to remain a wall ended up being removed. That wall did have some asbestos in it, and we do have to remediate that asbestos. We have taken steps, we've tested the second floor to make sure there was no asbestos in the air. They did find a little bit on a windowsill, so we're gonna clean the area and do the remediation. The state has been notified, somebody did call the state on us, reported us. I invited the young man to come down, he took a look, said we're doing everything just like we should. It's now in the state files as self-reported, and we're moving forward. And Ed's here to talk a little bit more about this.
Yeah. What do you want to know?
I stole your thunder, didn't I?
I mean, I don't really have an agenda of what we're gonna be talking about, but just in general, yeah, once the asbestos is abated, VMS should be back to finish the job. They're hoping to come back and do it all in one, one final mobilization. It's kinda had some pickups along the way with permitting and whatnot, which is real, was really kinda confusing. But we're, I think we're back on track now. Joe and I are working on some, some ideas for finishing the upstairs that will, will have to get incorporated in the project. But in general, the elevator's completed. We still need the testing and certification inspection, and then the elevator after that should be pretty close to operational. They have to finish work on the first floor here. We're investigating, probably replacing some flooring in here, you know, the flooring looks pretty bad, so it'd be nice to, we're doing all this work, it'd be nice to do something to jazz it up in there and make it look nice. There's some doors in here that have to get changed around. That's where the asbestos baitment will come in, you know, turns out, you never really realize where asbestos is, but it's in joint compound and old sheet rock. And we do have some in some electrical panels upstairs, and then some other sheets, I think they're gonna get encapsulated. But all in all, we really hope that once that happens, I think that's in April, we should be able to get back here, remobilize, and hopefully get this thing done for you guys. It's kinda been dragging out for a long time.
What are you looking for for flooring here?
We asked VMS to get in touch with the flooring contractor who's, actually, I don't even know if they have a flooring contractor on the job, but probably looking at a LVT, they call it luxury vinyl tile, I don't know why it's called that, but basically it's like a snap block vinyl tile. It really looks good when it's done, it'll most likely have a wood plank look, you know, so it'll, it'll look just like a wood floor. It can go over what's there, we don't wanna monkey with the tiles that are out there, because those are asbestos, so we don't wanna.
Are they?
I believe they are, yeah.
The second layer, so the top layer is not, the second layer is.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Which we weren't gonna touch that anyway, so.
Yeah, we typically try to encapsulate that, which is buried in the floor.
I was gonna say that that's not that old, I mean.
That stuff is not, oh, that's just vinyl composition tile. Well, it doesn't really wear that well, it tends to shrink and, you know, get gaps, and then, you know, people come in the wintertime, you start to get water under there, then the substrate starts to, so this.
It's probably fifteen years old anyways, yeah.
So I think the snap block vinyl would be much, and we'll look at some samples before we make any kind of final selections, but I think it would look really nice, and I'm gonna hate to have it, we'd wanna have it look really good when it's all done, so people can be happy with it. And then it's a matter of sorting out some finished details upstairs. But I think, you know, electrically, they're pretty well done downstairs, there's some nice lighting downstairs, we're looking to replace the boiler, probably go into two boilers, which is gonna cost a little bit more money, but I think the investment is gonna pay off really quick. Rather than have one big boiler that, you know, churns at three and a half gallons an hour, you know, you get two boilers that, you know, each will burn probably half of that. So in the shoulder season, you can use just the one boiler, when it's not really that cold out. And you'll be able to use two when it's super cold, but you're gonna end up.
Are they zoned off, or are they just working in context?
They would be, it'd be a lead-lag type system, so if one boiler is keeping up, the other one won't run. But then after this one runs for a certain time period, it'll rotate to the other boiler, so it's not all one boiler all the time, it'll go back and forth. And then if it's really cold and this boiler is not keeping up and the temperature drops, it'll fire both boilers. So it'll be based on, based on outside temperature, inside temperature, and the temperature of the water, so. Really hope to get it, get it wrapped up. Do you guys have any questions on the project or?
Timeframe?
Timeframe, we have asked them for a schedule, we had that same question, I haven't seen a schedule yet, but, I mean, by the end of the summer, yes, I'll throw it out there and cross my fingers, but I'm not lying to you, but I don't see why the end of the summer couldn't happen. It's all about availability of materials. We should have, you know, doors and hardware is always a long lead item, but those should be in. Other than that, we shouldn't have any long lead items. I think the boilers are readily available, so.
Doors were six weeks out, four and a half weeks ago.
Is that what he said?
It was something like that, yeah.
Yeah, so we're getting close.
It was six weeks.
Are they gonna be able to wrap up the downstairs this summer? Is the rough plumbing in for the bathrooms and all that stuff upstairs so that they can close in downstairs and have it finished?
Is the rough plumbing in?
Yeah, I mean, they're putting bathrooms up there, I assume they gotta put some rough plumbing in.
Yeah, they will. Is that in? I don't a hundred percent recall if the rough, if the rough in is in up there or not.
The plumbing is not in?
No.
Okay.
So that should be done before they finish downstairs?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
And we talked a little earlier about the asbestos and the remediation. I'm right in assuming, I know, just not enough to really say I'm knowledgeable in that area, if you don't disturb it, you don't need to worry about remediation, is that the general rule of thumb?
Yes, certain types of asbestos you can, you can leave in place, like all that stuff in the drywall, you will have to remediate or abate what is, what you need to disturb. You have to have an abatement contractor come in and do it. The rest of it, as long as you don't disturb it, you can leave it. If it's friable, you know, and it's flaking off in the space, then you need to remove it. But if it's not friable, you can, you can leave it encapsulated.
And the only other question that came to my mind is, sometimes I hear people talk about in old buildings like this, lead and paint. Is, what's, any?
The, any building before, I think it's nineteen, sometime in nineteen seventy-eight, I think, is assumed to have lead paint. So, I mean, I would guarantee an old building like this has lead paint. All the lead, the painting contractors are required to have lead paint certification, so they should understand, they know what they're doing with the lead paint.
Because we were planning on doing some painting, and we're just gonna paint over the top of what we have there, so it's not.
Any other questions, Josh?
Nope, looking forward to seeing the finish, bud.
Yeah. Really just thinking of free gas, I know you've been dragging it there a long time, sorry it's taking so long.
Yep.
We'll get it there.
Thank you.
Good, thanks for coming in.
Any questions out here? Okay, thank you.
All right.
Thank you, too.
Okay. Yeah, you got a question?
I got a comment. So on an unrelated asbestos topic, the same person, whoever that person may have been, did call the state, said that we were disturbing asbestos and lead in five and seven Union Street. That was, yeah, that was just a lie. We have not disturbed anything in those buildings. I did take the inspector over and had him examine those, and he, I mean, just looking at the buildings, you understood that he was being, he understood he was being lied to. So we do have the asbestos study back, and we're moving forward with demoing those two buildings.
Okay, approval of minutes of February twenty-first.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of February twenty-first as written.
Second, Dan.
Any additions, deletions, corrections? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Need one more aye.
Aye.
Okay, five minutes for public comment.
Yeah, I was wondering what was going on with the park.
So on Friday the seventeenth of last week, the town did petition, petition the probate court to remove Debbie Eddy from the administrative role of the park. The court did appoint Connie Pell, a lawyer from Middlebury, to now be the administrator of that, of that estate.
Yeah, but is that a lawyer part of the lawyers with the town?
That lawyer does do some lawyering for the town.
I think that conflicts the interest.
It is not a conflict of interest.
It is when the town's the one that's doing the lawsuit against everybody.
We're being sued.
Yeah, you're suing us.
Yeah, I know that, but I mean, it's kinda a conflict of interest on everything else for that, too. Because why should the town be dealing with a lawyer for, somebody does stuff for the town, and this is outside of the town, Debbie Eddy don't, ain't nothing to do with the town.
And she's not doing anything.
Yeah, but their taxes got paid out of the money that came from last year. There were taxes, water money got paid.
Water got paid, there's still.
Their taxes got paid, too.
Like a thousand bucks.
Like four thousand dollars. Well.
Bring me the other twenty.
What are you doing? Papers?
Bring me the other twenty-six thousand then.
I mean, this is kinda like what we're going through every year. It's like, anytime you get money, you say they don't give no money for it.
No, we don't, we don't get what, what's owed.
Well, to get half the people in the park that pays.
Well, yeah, and that, one of the things that, that the, that the estate is having, we're having problems with is, we don't have anybody to go to, to enforce any of the problems that we're having. So to get an executor that will move the estate forward will help. And we still got a lot of taxes to collect, we've got, I don't know, are we all caught up in water now?
Water was caught up, the next bill is coming out, and it was twenty-six hundred, twenty-five hundred dollars.
So remains to be seen about that, too. I mean, I, I know there's, there's good people in there, and there's people that aren't doing anything. I know that that, but we've got.
I mean, whatever money the town's getting from Debbie, that means that they're putting her name out there like she's not caring about it, she's giving money, whatever she gets, to you guys. And you guys acting like it, nobody cares, here. I mean, you guys are putting her down in the paper, saying that she don't contact nobody, I think that's kinda rude for you guys to be doing, and you guys want a town lawyer involved in this. And I think that's another conflict of interest.
We're trying to move forward, that's why.
Well, I think the town lawyer is kinda a conflict of interest.
Didn't the court appoint this lawyer? Yeah. She's, she doesn't just work for the town, she has her own business, she's part of a, she's part of a group, so she has every right to do that. She's being paid by the estate, not by us, so we're not, it's not our lawyer at this. I mean, it, granted, it's a technical thing, but it's, it's the truth, and it's not, she's not being directed by us.
Yeah, but I don't see where they should be putting stuff in the paper where Debbie ain't paying the town anything. I think that's a little bit.
Not paying the taxes.
Well, she's given something, four thousand dollars is better than nothing.
But it's not enough.
I know it ain't enough.
Everybody in this town subsidizes that kind of a, when we're, when we're short taxes, no matter who it is, the, the rest of the townspeople subsidize those people that aren't paying their taxes. And so it's, it's incumbent on the town people, the selectmen, who are responsible for collecting those taxes, to do something about it. We can't just sit back and be happy with whatever, whatever we get. We have to get.
Well, you should be saying she's putting effort in, instead of putting, saying she's not contacting you guys, nope, it's all in the papers. I mean, that's a little disrespected. Should say she's given something. It ain't like she walked away from it, that's the way it's acting, like you guys are saying that she's walking away from it.
It feels like that.
It feels like it, but it ain't that, that ain't the truth. The truth is she's given something. She is trying to effort, that is the truth.
That's, that's fair, but it's, it's, it's a definition, it, we're just, we're just arguing definitions, I mean, or degree, not definitions, degree. I mean, we don't think it's enough of.
I mean, it's just like you own a piece of land, and you having this problem, too, and somebody does it to you, how would you feel about it?
I would feel that I deserved it. I mean, I've, look, I've been, many moons ago, I owed taxes here, you know, many moons ago, I did, did. My name was in the book, but I got, I got it back out, just because you have to, it's, it's a responsibility as a homeowner.
Yeah, but when she ain't making enough money for the park to go, she can't put these people in court for a rap, for, because it costs like fifteen hundred dollars or better to put a judgment against people, and you can't do it when you ain't got no money going in.
And that's why maybe this attorney will get.
Maybe we have somebody that's a little less, less involved, you know, personally involved with everybody that can, can move things forward, and that's all we're trying to do. We're not trying, we're not trying to diss anybody, we're not trying to make it, make it any more uncomfortable for anybody else, but we have a responsibility for the rest of the townspeople to, to collect the taxes, and that's what we're trying to do. And we're taking whatever effort we can do to do that, and it's not personal, it's, it's what we have to do. It'd be nice if we didn't have to, and it's, your point is taken that, 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 you know, talking to people, but they are, she is the person who is not doing anything in the probate, not changing that, not doing any, so we had to make some kind of move, and we did.
Can I make point of order that this is five minutes for public comment? We've already exceeded five minutes, and to have more discussion, we should.
All right, we are kinda repeating ourselves, that's, that's fair. Thank you. Is there any other people for? Okay. Public comment is over, Department Head reports. Chief, you're here first.
I don't have anything major for the last, I put the last month of works in your box, there should be six, three, so we're at four hundred and forty-one traffic tickets we've issued for the month, or for the year. We've issued one hundred and forty-four warnings, we've had seventeen actually, seventeen parking tickets and thirteen crashes so far. We are at seventeen arrests for the year. In the last two weeks, we had DUI two, infatuated person, and a DLS. We've been kinda busy, a lot of small stuff, nothing major. If you look back, we did get another e-ticketing grant for two more sets that'll finish off everything, everybody can move to e-ticketing in the cars. Those tons of hundred dollar grant, we received for that purpose, for heavy safety efforts. That should eliminate some mailing costs, as soon as you print the ticket, it's, it'll go right to court. So it'll eliminate having to come back and file everything, so hopefully that'll make it a little better. We're hoping to transition finally, everybody seems to be up to speed on the new criminal justice system that we got, we've been using it for about a year. So I think I'm gonna start with the sergeant, we'll pilot into the e-ticketing, and then once he's comfortable, we'll start rolling out to myself and the other guys that are being, just one step at a time. So we look forward to ordering that equipment. We've not gotten quotes back on the new car for prices for equipment yet, I'm figuring we're gonna have three or four thousand dollars in everything, between console and the lights. It's all different than anything that we've had. I think I said last time, we're gonna try to get whatever we can out of the one car, even the smaller lights, we can move in for side marker lights, but the, the other stuff just isn't fit, going from the Dodge to Ford. The state contract agency has not been real responsive on getting our stuff, but it's working to get the best deal, so.
Can you, can you sell that stuff, the, the other kind, the stuff that you can't use?
The old stuff, we can put it out, like the ones in two thousand twelve consoles, I don't know who would be interested, but we'll get tried. I think that's all I have, and, you know, in March, Sean Galvin was on his twenty-fifth year, if you saw that on the records. He's got me by, by three months. I think that's all I have, if you guys have any questions.
You sent something out about the dispatching, you, you heard anything more, or?
No, what I sent out to you and I think Joe, was just a, it's a bill, it's a bill in the House being proposed, which basically is gonna mandate everybody to pay. That's kinda looks like what's gonna get force fed at some point. Chittman was probably a year and a half ahead, everybody else on the establishment, a regional dispatch center for all Chittman agencies, they come out, it's falling apart. All the agencies up there have, they started looking at it, looking at the costs, and then decided for what they're paying, it might be a little bit more, but they have their own, so they decided to abandon ship on there. So they were kinda the pilot for us, and seeing how they were doing it, so now with that one failing, I don't know where this is gonna pan out. I think I talked about the, the committee was supposed to have reported in by January, or January one of this year, the committee said, we all have day jobs, and this is way over our head, and they can't come up with an idea. So this looks like we're gonna get pushed out again another year or two, which has been probably the last ten years, it seems to be doing that since they consolidated. So I have no, no news on that.
Do you think there's any chance the state will finally wake up and come back to reality and, and put their standards back in? Or not?
I know Terry Williams was trying to spearhead that, being a new senator, but I think he's gonna be outmatched party-wise, he's a minority. There's, that eleven million is still there, it was earmarked, so it's sitting aside. We've been trying to push back, like take the eleven million and reopen it up again, because it worked and we didn't have any problems, but I think they're just dead set on getting out of the business. It's just my personal thing. But it sounds like that bill, I think that you, Bob, rather, you guys saw it, was it looks like they're even gonna force fire, it doesn't say police, it says any emergency services agency. It looks like they're gonna force fire and EMS into that also.
And they're, they're over in.
They're already paying in Washington County.
Right.
If this bill goes through and we're paying, we're probably have to pull them back into line. But again, this could be two years from now, you're still talking about it.
It doesn't sound like it's gonna happen this year, that's for sure. Okay, thank you.
All right, so our buddies over at DPW, they've been out cutting a ton of brush, you see them on Green Road, cutting back trees, cutting back brush there. Nate said they did a ton of wood, so we haven't been out there in a while, so we cut back some, some big trees, get it out of our way. They're also out cold patching, they were all over town today, patching up those holes. So if you see something, if you see a pothole, let me know, we'll get them on it, but they've been doing pretty good. Something interesting, last week, well, we had a couple of lost kids in Fairhaven.
You had what?
Lost children.
Oh.
Yeah, two little, two little girls ended up, they jumped a bus and came from Rottland into Fairhaven. Staff, along with the help of the police chief, ended up reuniting them, we got them back to Rottland, so that was, that was the.
They were runaways, not lost.
No, runaways.
Intentionally lost.
Yeah. It's always, it's amazing what happens in a small town, just stuff like that bubbles up. Talked about that, talked about the park. We're gonna talk about lights in the park later, about the bids that came in. Oh, still more good news, so we need to recognize Eileen and Liz tonight. Eileen, last Tuesday, she noticed there was some kinda weird traffic hitting our website, these, these weird credit card spikes. She automatically knew that something was funny with that, so she called our security, the security company that deals with our, our credit cards, our credit card processing, and yeah, it was an attack on our system. So Eileen was, was able to kinda stop that, got with our security people, beefed up our security, and, and made it that much stronger, so now we're more, it, it'll be almost impossible to, to attack again, but.
Hopefully, though.
They always find a way, don't they?
Yes.
But we really appreciate, and we should recognize Eileen for that, because that could've turned out way worse than it did. She was, she was just, she had the presence of mind to see what was going on. And then for Liz, maybe not as, quite as dramatic as stopping an attack, but as we were transitioning from one, one treasurer to another, she was thinking ahead. It was days before the election, and she thought we really need to get moving on this, because what happened last time, we had a lag in getting the treasurer onboarded at the bank. So she had all the paperwork ready to go, she'd contacted the bank, let them know what was going on, and then it was only hours later that Sharon, the new treasurer, was, was signing checks and moving forward. So we have great staff in Town Hall that get along very well with each other, they're very engaged, and it's, it's just a joy and pleasure to work with these people. And that's what I got for you, we had on a good note. Nothing Town Manager Communications. That's part of it.
We'll get the other communications in a little bit.
Um, what are we talking about?
The park bid and the.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's on the agenda.
So no Town, Town Manager stuff, we both can be out. Tell those guys thank you.
Yeah, please, please pass our thanks along to them.
Absolutely.
Okay, old businesses, EV charging stations.
I think, I don't know if I put it in your packet or not, it's a little diagram of the, of EV station. No action is needed. This is, um, what the board requested, that those EV charging stations be moved to the park and ride. Um, to accommodate that, we need to move the parking lot, which is, or I'm sorry, move the sidewalk up behind the, the station. So that red line is gonna be a jog in the sidewalk that comes back down.
That's not the worst thing that ever happened.
No, and that's all. I just wanted to let the board know that that's, that's the accommodation we're making.
Mm-hmm, cool. All right. Moving right along, paving bids.
Paving bids, I left copies of the bids and then, uh, the brief tabulation there on your, uh, on the desk. We had two bids this year. Uh, Wilk paving came in at one hundred and sixty-three thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars.
Would you repeat that, please?
One hundred and sixty-three thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight. And Pike came in at one hundred seventy-three thousand, nine hundred fifteen dollars and seventy-five cents. So, so Wilk is the low bid. Um, I reviewed the bids just, uh, to make sure that they were, you know, apples for apples, for lack of a better term. Uh, their tonnage was similar, um, their price per ton was similar. Uh, handwork, emulsion, and milling is where, where Wilk really, um, saved money. And they did it by a reduced quantity. It's not like their price was extraordinarily better than the other. It's just they said they were gonna do less. It, it gives me pause to think, well, how did they do, how were they gonna do so much less? How are, how are they gonna do less work for less money and still give us the product that we want? But I don't build those. They say they can do it.
And these bids, just so that, you know, we have a paving schedule. So these bids, they were bidding on Union Street, West Park Place, the Park and Ride, and Adam Street.
Yes, sir.
That's the planned paving, right?
Yes. That's what they bid on.
So they all bid on the same, okay. So I, I don't understand, like, what are they doing less of? Just less, they're gonna use less tonnage? Concrete sidewalk?
Looked like the parking.
Park and Ride's a big difference.
Park and Ride looked like a big one. That was, that was, to Joe's point, that's, that's where the real.
Difference was.
Difference was, in the Park and Ride, that they are gonna, their bid was there.
Well.
That's.
Yeah.
Question.
Parking Ride's all gonna be new blacktop, correct?
It's not, the parking, it was not gonna be paved, no.
What are they doing?
They're putting in, uh, rain gardens and bump outs and restriping.
Yeah, there's gotta be a certain amount of paving, you gotta patch in.
They're gonna patch in around the curbs.
So you really don't need to tar that prior to.
Well, patching around the curbs, no, but, uh, this bid does include repaving the lot and South Park. In this bid.
Time out. One minute we're not paving it, the next minute we are.
The people building the Park and Ride.
Okay.
Will not pave it.
Okay, yeah, okay.
These people will pave it.
All right, okay. That, that makes sense to me. There's just a difference in the estimate of what they're gonna need by, by fifteen hundred yards. That just seems like a lot. Right? Is that what I'm looking at?
That's what I thought. It seems like a large number.
So when, I just a couple of questions. We see their bids and, and when did they, you know how the, sometimes there's concerns they come in too late and it's cold weather? Is there, these bids, they, they are gonna do all this paving in those places I mentioned and have it done by a certain date in the contract before the end of October?
September fifteenth or October fifteenth, but yes, it's, that's the, that's the deadline. We don't pave past that per contract.
So it sounds like that, that's good. And may, and this is for this bid right here. So I think I'll, I'll hold my other question for a paving discussion later. So you're looking for, uh, do you have a recommendation of?
Uh, I mean, yeah, I would recommend, uh, I would recommend Wilk. And I did talk to Nate this, this afternoon about it and he had the same concerns I did. Um, at the end of the day, um, it's the low bid and if they, if they trick us this time, then we'll know for next time. But I, I have to take them on their face value that they're gonna do what we, what we have said that they, that they said they would do.
We have specifics on what we asked for and they've been.
And they, they quoted?
And they quoted, exactly.
Is our, is our request specific enough?
We use the Rutland, Rutland City's RFP, so.
What we want, I mean, what we want is in there specifically enough?
The roads, and we did, we did tweak it to include more handwork. Um, a better definition of how far back it goes. So I would say yes. There's always something that pops up, Rod, but we're approving it as we go.
Okay.
I make a motion to accept the Wilk paving bid for. Was it one sixty-three, six sixty-eight?
Your second.
A second.
Any other discussion?
This includes the fifty thousand dollars extra that was voted in.
That's, that's the question I said I wasn't gonna talk about, because this is a bid for what we had. That, that fifty thousand, to me, was another, it's another whole discussion. Uh, this.
So it doesn't include that?
Not in.
In the funding?
I, I, I think that's another discussion that we need to warn.
What do we budget? We budget a hundred and eighty or a hundred and?
Hundred and eighty-five?
Hundred and ninety-five thousand.
Five thousand for crack scene.
Okay.
So we're, we're within our.
We're in budget.
We're in budget here.
Either way.
I understand your question, Rod. I just, uh, but I'm saying, no, we're, we're doing the bid for what we put together and we went out and bid. We need another whole discussion about the fifty thousand dollars that were voted in and where, I think, I think we need to warn that and.
We're best to use it.
I'd just like to say something. We've got some streets that are, broke up very soon after they were paved last time. Uh, Pleasant Street being one of them. They chewed it down way too far. The water lays in it all the time. The water cannot get off in there. And I think it would be good if they overlaid that with some blacktop and got that brought back up. And got, and got that ditch, so, you know, across there's one driveway there in particular and the. I think, I think we could work with the property owner to get that water off that road fairly easy. With things like that is where we should do some extra paving.
But I, but I, I, I agree, but I just think, I think we need to warn it so that people, seeing how that fifty thousand was put in by an appropriation that someone went out and got signatures, I wouldn't feel right deciding where to put it until I heard.
I, I didn't see the petition. I don't know what it said or anything like that. But from what I've been told, it was for a specific street. That's how it was discussed.
I don't think fifty thousand was. It's not, it's not worded like that. Besides, we don't have to do that. We don't have to follow that.
Well, yeah, if the petition stated what street was gonna be done, then you have to.
It didn't, it didn't say that in the, in the petition.
Like I said, I didn't see the petition. I don't know what it says.
I don't think it did, but anyways, anyways, that's not part of this motion. Let's, let's get back to that when we're gonna, so is there any other discussion on this motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and now, yeah, it's, I don't, I don't know.
I didn't see the petition.
I don't, I don't think it was specific. I know they wanted to do, at one point, they wanted to do the dump road or something.
That's, from what I was told.
I don't think there's enough money. Fifty thousand dollars is not nearly enough money to do that. I would, you gotta take, you gotta do the, the base. I don't know.
When, when that road isn't, I.
Anyways, that's another discussion.
I could jump into this argument forever, saying, not even on our paving schedule, that and the road that you're talking about. Not even on our paving.
Uh, and here's a good one. Let's talk park lights and park and ride bid.
We, we did get the recommended, we did get one bid for the park and ride from Belden. Their bid was nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand, seventy dollars.
You should have held on right.
Yes, ma'am.
That's the only bid we got.
Uh, this bid is one hundred and sixty-four point four percent over our budget, sixty-four percent over our budget.
Sixty-four? I had sixty-one, but I don't believe you.
Now, is that for the whole project?
It's for both.
For both projects, that's.
Four hundred thousand dollars over, or three hundred and eighty-something thousand dollars. Highway robbery.
I'd say we, I, we can't do that.
Have we heard back from, from, um, Dubyan King?
Yes, they, uh, they sent paperwork there recommending rejection of the bid just because of how overpriced some of the estimates are.
Yeah. It, it was just way.
It's way off.
It's way off.
I make a motion when we get that.
What's second to that motion?
Any other discussion? I got a couple of things I wanna just say. I talked to, um, Derek Kennison, who's overseeing this project for V, V Trans. The mobilization, they're just specifics that he gave. The mobilization is four times the estimate. The park and ride is two times the estimate. The lighting in the park is two times the estimate, over by a hundred thousand dollars. So they, they just absolut, either they didn't wanna do it or they were going to do it and make a ton of money on it. I don't know what, which. But they're way off. They're way off. And there's no way we can come up with that kind of money. Nor should we.
It's interesting that V Trans didn't say that about the salt shed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, you know, we probably didn't grind him and, and ask him. And I, I mean, I talked to this guy for a half hour. He was, he was, he was shocked, to be honest with you. You know, he was, and, and there was a undercurrent there, but, you know, I'm not gonna put words in his mouth. But he, he was, he was shocked and, and he suggested a couple of things.
What's he talking about?
The re. Derek, and one of the things he said was to reach out to local contractors. They have to be pre-qualified for Fed and, um, State, which probably negates most of our local contracts, contractors. And then he gave the list, Belden being one, Markowski and, uh, um, Casella. I mean, the other one, but just think we gotta just start over.
It's strange that no one else wanted to bid on a job like this.
I know.
Really is, yeah.
Well, it might just be that their schedules are full.
Yeah, very well, very well.
All we got full workload, we're not.
So we just wait until things calm down.
The other thing that he did say we could do is separate the two projects. But it's not gonna change Belden's bid and nor can we ask. The other thing we can't do is, um, ask Belden to sharpen their pencil. We, we have to put it out to bid and everybody has a fair chance to come. But the bottom line is, we have a motion on.
That was advertised, correct? No, they, everybody had a chance to really see it.
Yeah, oh, yeah. That went out, yeah, went, went through the V Trans and everything, you know, that, they, so everybody saw it.
My only other comment would be, we are going to rebid it.
Yes, I talked to D and K today. We're gonna get another bid out next week. Some, some things need to be tweaked and we wanna sharpen up the bid as well to make it a little bit more palatable.
And, and the only reason I bring that up is I know the importance of trying to get the lighting in before we need it this year for things like concerts in the park and then, so we need to rebid and go. It doesn't mean we make a foolish decision and spend all kinds of money.
That's the thing, there's probably, nobody wants lights any more, any more than I do. I think it'd be a great thing for the concerts, but if we can't do it, we can't do it.
Right, and it, the, the honest truth is, rebidding it now means we will be really lucky to get anything moving this, this, this year.
No, no.
No, no.
This, this puts us back about a month.
I don't think so. I think you gotta be, you gotta be, nobody bid on it the first time. This is gonna be an add-on for somebody. I mean, I, I hope I'm wrong, but I, I'm, I'm pessimistic enough to do. We have a motion on it anyways, so. Everybody understand what we're doing?
Mm-hmm.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Have at it. Good luck.
Thanks. Um. It's been tough.
I reached out to one contractor I haven't heard back yet. I'm not sure that, that he's pre-qualified. He can be. It's not that big of a deal, but it's, it's, it's a, it's a requirement to bid.
Okay, liquor licenses.
And, and those are a combination of liquor and tobacco, so I, I'm gonna take them in the order that I have. So I'll do a tobacco license first. So I'll start with a motion to approve the tobacco license for Cloud Nine Cannabis located at eighty-seven Main Street.
Your second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve the tobacco substitute endorsement as requested by RL Valley Incorporated doing business as Maplefields.
Your second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Motion to approve the tobacco endorsement as requested by RL Valley Incorporated doing business as Maplefield. Looks like another one.
Tobacco, tobacco substitute.
Oh, tobacco, one is a tobacco, we just did the substitute. Okay, let me try that again. Motion to approve the tobacco endorsement as requested by RL Valley Incorporated doing business as Maplefields.
Second?
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye. Motion to approve the tobacco endorsement as requested by Walgreens.
Second? He's had it. You're doing a good job. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, liquor licenses. Ready for liquor licenses? Motion to approve the first-class restaurant bar license to Jekyll and Hyde Incorporated doing business as Tomasi's.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve the third-class restaurant slash bar license to Jekyll and Hyde Incorporated doing business as Tomasi's.
All those, second? All those in favor, sorry.
Wait a minute, what was that?
There was, the, the second one was a third-class liquor license. The first one was a first class. Yep, still liquor licenses.
I think it's 'cause they're a restaurant or, I don't know. And it's kinda weird.
There's a first class and a, and a third class, it's been.
There's a second class, means you could sell it.
I used to know, I don't exactly know now.
You still can't buy it and take it home?
No, not in the room.
Motion to approve a second-class license to RL Valley Incorporated doing business as Maplefields.
Second? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye. Is this another liquor that came in late? Or is this an outside consumption?
That must be as outside consumption.
Well, I, while I'm, uh, there, let's do the, uh, motion to approve an outside consumption permit for Fall Mountain Wines Incorporated.
What did you call it?
Fall Mountain Wines.
Fall, F-A-double-L?
F-A-double-L, uh, and they're an LLC.
Second?
I'll second that.
Everybody know where we're at? We're up on Tchakachol. All those in favor?
Aye.
At all of them for today?
So far, yeah, that's it.
Yeah, there's more to come. Okay. Okay, bond bank project completion form.
Yep. Um, is it okay if we postpone this till the next meeting? There's a series number of this bond I need to get from the board sign. I was thinking that was missing.
Okay. Uh, state revolving loan document.
Yep, so this is for the, the water line being replaced downtown. Um, we need, uh, signatures by the board, and then I can sign below as the authorized representative of the board.
Do we have to designate you, or?
It would probably be good to have it in the minutes, yeah.
So, you want a motion to sign it?
Motion to-
And designate you as the signee?
As the authorized representative, yes, and then the board signs.
I'll make a motion to sign the state revolving loan document and authorize, uh, Joe Gunter as our sign, representative.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
What would be your title, just representative, if you were?
Authorized representative.
Authorized.
Okay. An overview of the new website.
I'm pulling, I'm pulling it up right now. So, the town did, uh, uh, turn its new website on, and it is, it was live last, as of last Wednesday. We're now forwarding all, all website traffic from the old dot org site to our new Fairhaven, Vermont.gov site.
Scroll that up.
Nice video.
Yeah, nice. Look at this. Look at this. This is a beautiful little town. So, I wanted to give just a, a quick overview, just to introduce, uh, those who watch, uh, Peg TV, uh, to what the website's about. Uh, maybe some of the functions we have. So, the most important thing, to pay my bill. Make sure your water taxes are paid. Uh, this, this operates just like it used to. We just, we just copied that, that function right over, so as not to cause confusion. Um, so that's the same. You pop in your account numbers, your amount numbers, and there you go. You submit, uh, just like it was at the old, uh, old website. Um, for departments, what I was, I've been trying to gather some feedback. Zoning was a big thing. People wanted to see, um, all of our, uh, some of the approved licenses, so there's our approved zoning permits. So far this year, we're gonna keep those up through the year, and then archive those, and then start putting the, the next years in as time, time goes by.
Do you have pending? Can you put pending?
If you want.
Well, I mean, I don't wanna overload it, but I don't, that would be an interesting, that would be good for, so we could have discussion at the zoning. You know, somebody might, might wanna be informed by that.
Let me, uh, let me see what it looks like.
Okay.
Um, on the left here, you'll see the applications, driveway permit, site, uh, sign permit, everything you need to do, to do business here in Fairhaven. Um, and then town plans, our zoning districts, uh, the bylaws, and then the table of contents for that, so, it's very functional. I did have a, a young, tech-savvy man call me and say, "Can you just submit, uh, your forms right online?" And my answer was, "No, we're not that, we're not that sophisticated." So, we'll get there sooner or later. Um, town clerk's office, we'll jump, see what's in here. There's, there's the clerk, Mr. Roberts, and in the clerk, you'll find the, your deeds. This is where you go online to search for, search our town records, the property records. So, you can, you can log in as a guest. And then, uh, instead of coming on in and, and pawing through the vault, you can just search, let's see. Let's see what we can come up with. And there you go. You find warranty deeds, covenants, and mortgages, everything that's in your, um, uh, land records. Yeah, it's, it's-
What about rights of way?
Rights of way will be in there as well.
Will be, not yet.
So, everything, I, I'm not sure how far back she goes, but everything from current back, something like forty years is in there. So, if it's in the land records, you can find it here.
She was, it's an ongoing project, remember?
Well, I understand, uh, but you, you said three items were in there now. I mean, and I said, well, what about rights of way?
Oh, yeah, rights of way. Everything that you could find in the land records is so, I mean, I didn't say everything, but easements, maps, quit claims, it, it's all in there. Yeah, yeah, it's, you can search by name. It'll come up what's, uh, what's attached to that person. Let me see, where am I at? Let me go back. Uh, it's not letting me go all the way back.
Just a quick-
Let's do it like this. And I know some folks were looking for the maps, and that is under listers. So, we go over here to the listers department. There's our grand list. Maybe it's not under listers, maybe I lied. Oh, right there it is.
Right there.
There's our lister card. So, you jump in here. This is what the board of selectmen, uh, authorized for purchase a couple of years ago. This shows all the, all the lots in town. So, you zoom-
It's a great little feature. You hit the search and type in, and you can, you can, any, any house, picture, street sign.
Which, for, for any kind of appeals and, and, uh, yeah, that's really great.
So, we'll, we'll find Claire.
Claire's right next to you.
River of Brooklyn.
I looked, I looked on at that computer one time for my lot.
There's Ruby.
And there was a picture of me with my dog.
Really?
Right there.
And there you are.
There you are.
Then there's, let's see, there's Claire Stanley.
Yep.
Now, everybody knows where you live. So, also, there's a little bit of, uh, a little bit of information in here too.
There it is.
They'll show the house.
It's my house.
Yep. Are you in the picture?
Not in that one, no.
And then there's also the property card too. You can find, this gives you your, uh, just your, uh, assessed value, a little bit of information, acreage.
That'll be just, for any guy, anybody doing an appeal, doing comparables, that'll be so nice. You know, that'll just be sweet. So much easier.
And that's, that's pretty much, I just wanted to introduce it.
So, realtors now can go in, instead of having to search for these old deeds for some of this town property? She could go into this thing and get that information?
Yes. Um, if it's, if it's been scanned and uploaded into the system, because some town deeds are so old, they're not in there yet.
Can you show them how to get the select board agenda in minutes?
Oh, of course.
Which, usually there's, there's things that I look at, select board agenda in minutes, planning board agenda in minutes, uh, EDC. It's nice to, if you're a historical society, either-
Yep, so we're under government. We bang over to the select board, uh, portion of the website. There's our town fathers, and there's our agendas and our minutes. Uh, so this, there is a, um, an archives portion of our website. Uh, as these become, as, as we phase through the new, phase out of the new, uh, new fiscal year, we'll move this stuff onto the archives. And then we'll keep this clean, so that way it's not kinda piled high like it was in the last website.
Yeah, it was, it's tight.
Yep.
You might, I mean, can you consider just having a rolling eight-month? Because, you know, when you hit the new fiscal year, to make the last three or four meetings disappear, now you have to go into archives. It was last meeting, it was, it was yesterday, potentially.
Sure.
So, if you had a rolling, I, I don't know if, you know, what's viable in, in this.
Uh, I, I, I think it's possible, but it, it comes down to a lot of work too. So, we're gonna spend a lot more time working on the website now to keep it, to keep it up and keep it fresh. Um, we can see how it goes, but I'd hate to bog down idling with, with having to do this every, every day or every week even.
That's true.
But, yeah, it's-
It'd be automatic though, I mean, what you said, the truth, archive, you know, nine months back.
I, I, I would, that's what I was assuming, that, that it could be-
Something out of-
A program feature, that, you know, you put in, as you put in the ninth, you know, the, the, the last meeting, the one nine months ago goes to archives automatically.
Yeah, I can ask.
And the other big one that people look for is policies. On this one here, your policies and your ordinances. People, lots of times, you think, "Do we have a policy, or is there an ordinance for this right here?" Those functions have a dropdown that you, you scroll on all the policies and ordinances.
Certain person you could direct to the town.
Policies?
Town policies.
Now, the, the nice thing is, you don't have to download a, uh, a Word file and print it. You go to print, and it prints it out automatically.
The, the young lady that did the, did the website, she did a lot of work to clean up our, our policies. 'Cause some of them were scanned in, and it was not always the best of scans. So, she cleaned them up, put the signatures back in there, and made it, made it look good. So, we, we appreciated her work.
Did, did a great job for very reasonable costs, uh, we-
Are they like alphabetized or numbered, or what?
I don't think so. Let's look.
When you go to the ordinances, I think the ordinances are-
I know, we, we had, at school, we had to have numbers on them.
They're alpha, the, the ordinance are alpha.
Oh, yeah, they are.
Alpha, better than-
Yep.
Yeah. Makes it easier to find them if you're alpha.
It's a lot, boy, it's, looks, looks more professional and much. People thinking about moving in here and buying a-
Even the size of the font is bigger.
I mean, people thinking about buying a house here will take a look.
That's a great picture.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's, that's, I just wanted to introduce it. Um, if you have any questions, I'm around. I'm still learning it myself. I gotta get in and tinker with it, but it's, it seems like we're, we're working all the bugs out very quickly.
I guess I gotta get on a computer and play.
It looks good.
But, money well spat that the economic development committee took part of the budget money that you put in there to subsidize this, yeah.
Send our appreciation that way as well. Appointment of health officers, the add-on.
So, Sarah, Sarah Trombley, she did send, uh, an email to both Bob and myself. She is requesting to be appointed as the Fairhaven Town Health Officer.
She also sent an email to resign as the assistant, which is what Danny wanted. So, she's, there's an email, if you don't have it, I have it.
Okay, yes.
She, so she resigned from the, from assistant. She's requesting to be the town health officer. If we make the mo, motion today, she can get sworn in, and will be as the first of the, first of April, she will be the new health officer.
So, you're looking for a motion to-
Except, I'll make-
I make the motion, we check.
Sarah Trombley is her help.
As a health officer.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? I will abstain, 'cause I'm her employer outside of the town, so, don't want any- All you can pass on is she's been elected, and that she can come in and get sworn in, and fill out, there's paperwork to be filled out. If she can do it before the first, then we can get her on as of the first. If we can't get her on before the, if she can't come in before then, then we have to wait a whole month.
Okay.
No, she hasn't been elected, she was appointed.
She was appointed.
You said she was elected.
Was I? Did I? Well, she's been appointed.
That's her point.
Why would she have to wait a whole month if we appointed her?
Because that's what Danny says has to happen. That only, that the, the, the appointing, the, the state only-
State statute.
They only recognize every first of the week, first of the month, any appointments.
Already the assistant, so-
I, I don't-
That's something.
I'm, I'm dealing, I'm dealing with hoops.
I was just thinking, if you're already the assistant, you're just stepping up and then effective with this day.
Basically, if you're the only one, you are the assistant also.
No, it, no, well, the, what happens is, is until she's, until she's duly appointed on April first, I'm the, I'm the, uh, health officer.
They'll appoint you in absenteeism, absenteeing.
Now-
You know what? One more thing that we might wanna do is accept her resignation, uh, from the assistant, just to make sure.
You want a motion?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to-
Would it be wise to say, as of the thirty-first of March, we would accept her?
Yeah.
I think so. I'll, I'll make a motion to accept Sarah Trombley's resignation, uh, of assistant health officer as of the thirty-first of March.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
With one extension?
Okay. A question, because are we going to go and now advertise? Because we put, uh, the, the pay in, in for both the assist, the health officer and, and an assistant? Can we go and advertise that we're, we're looking for an assistant?
Yeah, we sure can.
I, I think it was, it was nice having a health officer and an assistant, uh, and I think it may-
It doesn't hurt to have-
And see if there's someone to be willing to, because we even put some mileage and some money together for that, for that position. There's small statement, yeah.
Okay. And I think we've done everything we have to do. Did you, were you able to get the paperwork?
For Sarah?
For Sarah?
Yes, I have it.
Okay. So, she just comes in and sign that, and gets sworn in by Danny, and we are on the books for the first, and that will be good.
We can expedite them now, Dave's gotta get to the state, so we can expedite that. It's not a problem.
Bureaucracy. Okay. Um, hmm, board roundtable. Rich?
You know, I don't have a lot. I just, I just, food for thought, if this bargain ride goes forward. You know, it's gonna be a lot more time and energy spent removing snow and stuff. And I just want to make, make sure people are aware of this.
Why?
Why?
Yeah.
It's not gonna be a straight shot with the-
Well, you know what? Those guys gotta learn how to keep the flower down and just go around the corner. I don't think it's gonna be that big of a deal.
With the cars that are parked there with snow bags?
Yeah, it's gonna be, it's gonna be quite a program.
It's already, they're down there.
Yeah, it, it is. Yeah, you're right. You're, you're right though. I mean, there is-
Yeah, you got all the-
There have to be a lot of use the front end loader and dump it into the, uh-
Right, they're gonna put it in the truck and haul it.
A lot of that's gonna have to be removed now.
Right.
Yeah, just-
They'll ruin the rain garden if they dump it in snow.
Snow removal's gonna be on, the storage, you're gonna have to store it somewhere.
It'll look better, if we ever get it, if we ever get somebody to have a reasonable price. Yeah, you're probably right.
Just, you know, as I'm sitting here looking at that, you know, I just, um, we're always, uh, hollering about equipment and not having enough of this, and not having enough guys to do this and that and other thing, and, you know, we're gonna add more to it without dealing with the problems. You know, I just, I just want people aware of it.
I don't think it's that, gonna be that big of a, 'cause like, like- I don't think it's that, going to be that big of a, because like, like she said, there's always parked cars and junk there anyway, so. They got to go around that. I, for the improvement that we're going to get, it's worth it, I think. But we'll see. There will be difference. It will be different. That's true. All right?
So.
Okay. Good. Um.
Not too much. Uh, I think it's just important again to say thanks to Eileen and Liz, from what you shared, Joe. And, and, uh, you know, the things that they were able to catch and take care of. Um, also thanks to the website team. And, uh, you said Sean Galvin, twenty-five years in the department. So huge congratulations. Three in ninety-eight. Yeah, that's, and you're three months behind? Yeah, I started in May in ninety-eight. Oh boy, so in three months, I'll, I'll wish you the same. Sean, who is actually, I think he is six in ninety-eight, so three of us have got twenty-five years. That's dedication to the town of Fairhaven. I appreciate it. Uh, also want to recognize, Fairhaven has the Vermont Gatorade Player of the Year.
Yes.
For, for boys' basketball.
Oh.
And Sawyer Ramey, so that's a huge accomplishment. Uh, just want to, uh, put it out there as recognition. Um, Fairhaven sports, Fairhaven, the school system, you know, this is, it's really a, a town to be proud of and I appreciate that. And, uh, excited to see the town in the years to come.
And you put on a show Saturday too.
Oh, yeah.
I, I heard. I didn't, I didn't get to see much of it, but I heard that.
What's his first name?
Sawyer.
Sawyer.
He, um, the commentators were.
They, they're quite impressed.
Oh, yeah.
It's a great, it's a great family.
Yeah.
Uh, that's all I have today. I'll share some ideas next time. I got to continue to formulate them.
Only had, uh, uh, one, one item. It was, it was great to see the appropriation for, uh, the, the playground area fence and mowing and the, and the painting of the park fence. And so I don't know what that entailed, but probably bid for, looking for that and probably our new recreation. I'm not, I'm just trying to figure out the, now that we, we've, we have, and I want to thank the voters for giving us, now we have a budget for maintenance of some of these, uh, recreation areas so that we can work at it when we're doing, uh, budgeting as well. And we can get some things done. So a great thing, and it's probably our new recreation. Folks down at the playground are going to have some input as to what they need and prioritizing that. So new item for this year, but good thing. So I.
Um, the only thing I, the only thing I have is, did you get that cover on Second Street and, and Mechanic Street?
Yes, they said they went and got it.
Oh, good. That, that was, that was, somebody must have grabbed that. You know, or I don't know what else would have happened. Somebody must have pulled that cover. You know, that's weird. It, it was a cover on a cleanout port in the middle of town.
Manhole cover?
Not a manhole, smaller, eight, eight inch like cleanout of some sort.
Oh.
I'd never seen, I'd never noticed it before. I lived on Mechanic Street all my life.
Water shut off?
Yeah, it's not, no, it's a, it's a.
It was bigger than, I thought it was a water shut off.
Well, it, it could be, I suppose. I don't know.
You got the big water shut offs on some of the streets.
Maybe that's what it was, yeah. I, I never noticed it before. Like I said, I lived there all my life and we would have tampered with it if we thought we could have when we were there.
Is it repaired?
It's repaired, thank you. Um, the other thing, the follow-up on what Chad just said briefly, uh, we used to do a thing in the board, um, where we brought in, um, things we needed, we would like to get done over the year. Uh, just, and like three things. And everybody gives three things and it, it, there are goals, they're not necessarily all going to happen, but, so we're focused on what's going on and it wouldn't be a bad thing if we brought everything in and did that. That, you know, just, just if, if there are some, something that's, you're, you're thinking about, so we can get it on, on the DBW's agenda or the Water Department or whoever it happens to be's agenda or the Town Manager's agenda, Police Department, whatever it is. Just three things. And then we've got something to deal with and we can, we can bug it with them every week and say, what are you, what are you doing on that? Anyways, it's just, yeah, exactly.
New spirit.
And, and the other thing was, we talked about this, uh, I was approached at, at Maple Free at the Fields about the, uh, executor. The, the word on the street was you're taking over as executor.
I'm not taking over as executor.
I think that was explained well today. But that was the word I got. And I went, no, that's not happening. Well, according to your minutes, you told him not to do that. And I said, well, he's not.
I'm following orders.
Yeah, he's doing.
I have a question on that. I must think about it. So is she going to be the contact, like if I'm trying to clean up? Is it going to go to her as the executor?
The executor, yeah.
To Debbie, yeah, you can executive. I will, I will reach out to the new executor and see what that looks like. And maybe, maybe we have to deal with the court at that point. But we'll, we'll find you a new contact if we need to. I'm just, because that's where, like I said, any violations, we'd mail them to the, the estate care of. And I haven't done it in a while, but I know I had actually addressed it with Mr. Delaney, his property, which ultimately is not his, it's the park property. So I didn't know if, with spring here, I'd like to pick that battle up again at some point. If we have somebody that's responsive, I mean, if you have a new executor, maybe they would be on them more. Yeah. Yeah. I'm telling.
Financials?
Yep.
Okay, we have a, we have a couple different, uh, uh, because of our not having a meeting on the seventh, I'm going to start with the first payroll from, uh, uh, the, the three-nine payroll for, I want to make a motion to pay the payroll of thirty-three thousand fifty-one dollars and thirty-one cents.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, make a motion to pay the general warrant of eight-hundred-and-seven-thousand-nine-hundred-and-sixty-six fifty-five cents.
Your second?
Second.
Obviously a school payment.
Yes, there's a big school payment in there.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, this is for a week, uh, the most current one. Uh, make a motion to pay the payroll of thirty-three thousand eight-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, make a motion to pay the general warrant of a hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand-eight-hundred-and-ninety-one dollars and sixty-six cents.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the checkbook status is eight-hundred-and-ninety-one-thousand-ninety-five dollars and twenty-eight cents.
And I have your paperwork you gave me about how that is going to be okay and covered by all.
For?
The, well, having that much money in one account. And there's, it's somewhat reassuring except for banks are dying left and right, so.
Oh, oh, yeah, the bank, the repurchase agreements, yeah, it was asked, you want me to talk about it?
Sure.
So it was asked, is, you know, we've seen a, that bank in California fail. Um, the question was asked, is our money safe in Fairhaven? And, and the answer was yes. We have a contract with the, with the, with the bank across the street. Um, with a repurchasing agreement is what it is. And that, that's, I'm, I don't know how the, how it functions, but we have our money in investments that are spread out across a large field. Um, and we go through this every day. We sell and buy and sell and buy, uh, so it keeps our money safe. So if there is a run on the bank, Fairhaven's not going to lose, lose their cash. Thank you. Yes. Can I stump for my onesie?
Oh, sure.
Sure.
I love these. Okay, so we, we made some, some proudly made in Fairhaven onesies for all our, for all the babies in Fairhaven. So if somebody's interested, um, Eileen will have a couple for sale up at, um, up at the front counter. They're twenty bucks and then the proceeds will go to our recreation department. Um, we're starting young. We're, we're growing our rec department, um, from an early age.
One onesie at a time.
One.
One onesie by the time they play T-ball.
Yep.
You don't want to say that you have mail. No, okay.
Do we, what do we have, um, for executive?
Legal and.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session for Attorney Communication, one DSA three thirteen A one. And for Personnel, one DSA three thirteen A three.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?